Let's call this meeting to order. Please stand for the porch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. This is the Porter County Board of Commissioners' meeting on November 5th, 2019. It is Election Day for municipals. We'll move right into Concern Agenda. Melanie, please read that out for us. Thank you.
Okay. Approval of payroll, October 18th and November 1st, 2019. Approval of minutes, October 8th, 2019. Approval of claims, October 10th, October 17th, October 24th, and October 30th, 2019. Treasurer's monthly report filed, September 30th, 2019. Waits and measures reports filed, August 16th and September 15th, 2019. Waits and measures report filed, September 16th to October 15th, 2019.
Okay. And then we'll move right into Artistic Services Agreement. Laura, you want to go ahead and read those?
Do I need to read all the names or can I just?
As noted per the agenda.
Yep.
As noted per the agenda.
The 23 artistic services agreements as noted for the agenda. And then we have a venue rental agreement, nonprofit, with Shirley Heinz Land Trust.
Okay, that is the Concern Agenda. I'll throw it to the board for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion of second for Concern Agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, same sign. Motion carries. We're going to get into announcements. First of all, just announcing for the Redevelopment Commission that met last week or the week before. I think it was last week, the week before last. Regional Development Corporation approved the construction of the new substation in South Haven on 700 North. And that will be, I think the contract was around 1.4 million, roughly thereabouts, and will be building a sub-garage up there for highway stormwater. So when we're in South Haven and snowplowing and doing work up there and other things, we now have a place up in that area to work out of. Our other county garages are quite far from South Haven. Either the Valpo garage or the Chesterton garage are quite a ways away. This was a piece of property that the county had owned already, so we're just repurposing it and going to put it to use so we can serve the citizens of South Haven much better than we've had in the past. So I just wanted to make that announcement. We're very proud of that. This is a continued effort to re-energize the South Haven area with drainage and services that the unincorporated county is to provide for that area. So it's an onward, ongoing project up there, but this is another piece of that puzzle. So I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that announcement that the Redevelopment Commission is doing. And we're going to be, over the last three years, the Redevelopment Commission has carved out enough money out of the Commissioners' budgets to be able to fund this garage. So it will be fully funded. We have the money in the bank now, and we can build it. So I just wanted to make that clear, too. That's how we're going to fund it.
Yep. The two sources were lift funds or local income tax and the money from the hospital payment, tax of payment.
Yep. So that's the only announcement that I have at this point. We're going to move right into old business. We have the Northern Indiana Atheists. We have Troy Moss, Director. This is a request to use the courthouse grounds on a Friday, December 6th, from 5:00 to 8:00 to decorate for the community holiday celebration. They are asking for approval to set up their holiday display, two NIA signs and an information table. And then we also have a second request now that they've requested to have two volunteers stationed near the southern courthouse door to talk to people about Northern Indiana Atheists. We would like to request the same dates, times, equipment as courtside ministries is asking for. I'll turn that over to Attorney McClure.
On the first request for December 6th, which corner would you like of the courthouse grounds? What quadrant? So the only place you can't be is the secured zones, the off-limits places for judges' secure lot and the landing pad, and the prisoner pick-up and drop-off. Other than that, pick a corner.
That's the area that's, the northeast corner and the middle of the southwest and southeast corners that are blocked off with the slashes?
Yep. Yep, that's where the judges' parking is, the actual front entrance, and where the prisoner drop, pick-up and drop-off is. The map's oriented north.
Southeast.
Southeast. Okay. Need a motion?
Motion to approve southeast corner.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the southeast corner for the Northern Indiana Atheists for December 6th, 5:00 till 8:00. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, same sign. Motion carries. And then...
On request number two, I would suggest, as in the last meeting, that we approve them with the same approval that we gave the courtside ministries, which is stay out of the secured areas, stay off that, the landing pad right outside the main entrance. If you want to be on the sidewalk that's in yellow, you have to go to the City of Alvarado for that approval. It's their sidewalk, not ours. And...
We don't want to be anywhere that they're not allowed to be either.
Yeah, I understand.
Yep.
And same conditions as they have. Can't approach anyone. You put your table up, and whoever would like to talk to you can talk to you.
Thank you.
We have a motion.
Motion.
That.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion of second for two volunteers to be stationed at the southern courthouse door in the, maybe I shouldn't...
With the same...
With the same stipulation as courtside ministries for the Northern Indiana Atheists. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Have a good day. Next up, we have Commissioners. Kurt Ellis is going to give us a little bit of a presentation on our newly-launched website that went live last week. Is that correct, Kurt?
The 24th.
What was it?
The 24th.
The 24th of October. So Kurt, we'll give you a few minutes here to show everybody what we're up to now.
Thank you. Give us a reminder of where we were at.
Yep.
When this site was launched, it was probably the best technology out there, but it has grown dated over the years. Civic Plus, our website host, in our contract, we had a free upgrade to their new platform. So the overall cost to us was nothing. We did pay for a couple of extra things to clean up and convert our content and to do some content optimization, but overall, this saved us about $8,000 or $9,000 because we had that in the contract. The menus on this old site were very limited. If you were checking from a mobile device, you might as well forget it because it was almost impossible to find whatever you need. We did have an app on that old site. The app is going away because we don't need it anymore, because now we have a mobile-friendly, mobile-responsive site where you can see how it looks like on a mobile device, if I can shrink this window anymore. Oh, there it is. That's the mobile view of the new website. On the homepage, we did a lot of changes to, we identified those things on the old site that people went to the most, the highest, were always property taxes, elections, and GIS. So we have those things prominently featured on the homepage. We have GIS maps. We have property taxes. We have the county assessor down below. We have elections and voting. And then, of course, we've got these news flashes now where we can highlight specific items that are coming up or news that we want to get out. And again, you'll see that the first two categories are concentrating on property taxes and elections right now. We also restructured our menus. The old menu just came that listed departments A through Z. Well, a lot of people who don't visit our site often don't know what department does what. So what we did was we structured the menu by categories. We still have the old A to Z list, but we broke it down into categories such as county governments, governance, county administration, finance and real estate, health and environment, development and stormwaters, election and registration, property tax portal. So it makes it just easier and more intuitive for people to find. In the next menu, we focused it down even a little bit farther. Hmm. What's going on?
It was a good website.
It was. The website's still there. Our internet is apparently acting up a little bit. Let me try it again. Nope. It's off down there. Well, it figures.
We can come back, Kurt.
Okay. What I'd like to do is though, maybe address the policy issue that I put before you on maintaining the county website. Our old website, we kind of had a policy, and it was an experiment, where we let each department update their own page content. I would put to you it was an experiment that didn't work real well, and we ran into a lot of problems with the conversion over the new site in that a lot of the content that was on the old site was not ADA compliant. No. People with visual impairments have readers that read things to them on there, and the content that we had on there, the way it was formatted, was not ADA compliant, so those people could not access information on our website. We want to maintain consistent formatting throughout the site. We want to continue to improve the content so that it's mobile-responsive, so that it, when you shrink the window to a mobile content, you have to scroll a lot. If you have a lot of content on one page, you end up scrolling forever and ever. We want to find ways to break things down into smaller categories so that they're easy to read and easy to respond to. Want to reduce the use of dated materials. We had a lot of pages out there that had this date and that date, and those dates had expired, and nobody ever went back to change anything. And we want to use, integrate more our modules into the page content. We have these modules called calendars, agendas, minutes, et cetera, where a lot of, in a lot of cases, we're going back and putting on there, you know, specific meeting dates on the pages, specific links to agendas, et cetera. Well, what we've done is, rather than having to list that on the page, we've taken these modules and imported them to the pages. So this is the Commissioners', this is our agendas and minutes. All Kathy has to do now is upload an agenda or minutes into the Agenda Center, and it's right there for the people to look at. We don't have to go in and make changes on the pages all the time. The same thing on meetings, where if we have our meetings on our Commissioners' calendar, people can click on that link, and it will show them upcoming meetings of the Board of Commissioners. No more having, it's automatic. So we want to make this as easy as possible to maintain the content on pages by utilizing these modules better. We have to do some things differently. A lot of times in the past, we were uploading documents that were scanned documents. Scanned documents are not ADA compliant because they cannot be read by a reader. So we now have to take our Word documents or Excel documents, convert them to a PDF, and upload them. This is going to take some time to do because, I mean, for example, the campaign finance reports, all of those are turned in, a lot of them are handwritten. The only way to have them, get them out there is by scanning them. But we're working with Jessica to find ways that maybe we can do that better in the future. But what I'd like to do is continue our improvement in ADA compliance. We're not going to get there overnight. It's going to take some time, but I think we need to maintain a very strong focus on that as well. And we want to make sure, the other problem that we ran into, there was content on there, specifically images that people just kind of pulled off the internet and put them on our website. Well, we are not authorized to use that content, and we have to be more careful in what we use on images to make sure it's stuff that we have the right to use. And finally, we want to maintain those homepage menus and keep them as interactive with the public as possible. So what we're proposing is that the IT department will continue to control the who has access and modify those permissions upon approval by the Commissioners' designee. In other words, if they want to add, if a department wants to add somebody new, that's fine, but I want to make sure they're trained in how to do it first. So once we go through those trainings, I can tell IT, "Go ahead and do that." Departments, the designees in each department will only have access to maintain those modules, the activities, Agenda Center, Archive Center, Bid, Postings, Calendars, Document Center, Facilities, et cetera, which are, we are importing to the pages. And then any content on the actual pages would then have to come through the Commissioners' office to Build, Edit, or Maintain. So that's what I'm proposing to you as a policy. I mean, we did a lot of cleanup work.
Yep.
I want to be sure that we continued up.
But like we've done up here on everything else, once we've cleaned it up, we've got to put standards in place because we want to maintain a consistent image out there for the county. We want to make sure we're ADA compliant, right? And so it will be, this new website will be, have a lot more oversight than the last one, and we're starting just to let all the different departments know, "Don't fight us. We're doing this for the good of everybody and to try and make sure that we, you know, aren't in error, doing anything illegal or wrong." And as you open up these websites, these are the type of things you get into. It's not, as you can see, it's not all about design. There's a lot of other things that go into this. One of the other things that I'm very proud of as we're coming out of this end is this board made the decision about seven months ago to add the analytic package to this website. And what this will allow us to do now is we can go in and we can look at our hits, we can look at where the traffic is going. If we can see certain traffic going to certain departments or whatever, those are the areas that we can look at, we can enhance, we can try to make better. The analytics piece will have a large part of how we on-go develop this website, but we now have data. So we'll know where we need to enhance the website, we'll know by the hits, we'll know where we need to go, where we need to continue to get better, where we need to continue to be more robust so that the user can get in and find their way and get them the information that they want. So, and last, I'd like to just thank Kurt. You know, if the county would have gone out and done this with a third party, we'd be spending lots and lots and lots more money. And I can tell you, Kurt dialed this thing in. He actually came in a couple of months earlier than what he thought he was going to be able to get it done with because we were pressing him pretty hard because we wanted to get it out there. So a lot of thankings go to Kurt Ellis all the way around. Good job, my man, and thank you.
I'm very proud of it.
It should be.
And just on your analytics, since we launched on October 24th through yesterday, we've had 16,000 visits to our website totaling 41,000 page views.
Oh, wow.
And it's still holding consistent that of those page views, 28% were the homepage and the global navigation items. 19%, 7,600 views were for property taxes. 7,100 of those views, 17% were elections. GIS were 1,951 views, and 5%, I expect that after today, we're going to see a big, huge bump, mostly on elections. And as you can see, we have predominantly featured on our homepage, right smack at the bottom, and it will look like this in a mobile view that people can get the election results tonight. I will be updating them on the website tonight for the first time to make sure everything works okay, but I've already tested it like five different times because I know that people are going to complain if we don't have things done properly. So we're ready to go. This will be one of our big public tests for tonight, but I think overall, it continues our move into using 21st century technology.
Yeah, absolutely.
A lot of the compliments I've gotten has been the mobile. Yeah. That's, everybody said, "Wow, I can get this stuff so easily."
And it's pretty.
Right. And it's readable. You know, the other thing, too, on our website, if you saw on there, too, the GIS, I'm going to continue to keep pounding that drum. This county has made significant leaps in the last two years in our GIS data, and we're still working through that. We have a long way to go. Stormwater's involved in this. Plan is involved in this. Bridges are involved in this. We're continually adding more data to our GIS website so not only people that live here, but people that are wanting to do business here or anything can get into this GIS, and there's just a ton of data that is available, a ton available today that we didn't have two years ago, and there'll be a ton two years from now more than what we have today. It's a big emphasis for this board and for the different departments that that affects, but continue to watch that GIS. It's going to continue to have more and more things adding on to that. We're really excited about that because you can find out a lot of stuff on this GIS without even having to come here. So it's, I think it will aid and assist a lot of people to get a lot of things done from the comforts of their home and be able to understand truly what's going on. So we're very focused on that, to be able to communicate via technology with our constituents and other stakeholders. So, good job. Any other comments from any of the other board members?
I think we need to vote on this policy.
Yep.
So I will make a motion to approve the policy for maintaining the county website.
Second. We have a motion of second for the new Porter County website policy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Kurt.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to get into some payouts. We're going to try to work through these real quick, so hang on here. First one is Expo Center. We're still, we're pretty much finished out there. What I'm going to do is we're going to vote on number one separately, and then I'm going to vote on two and three together. Does that make sense, Attorney McClure? So the first one is E.C. Babila. It's a payout number three, the amount of $10,894 for roofing. And you can see the remaining balance on there. We'll pay for that payout. Throw it to the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion of second for payout number three for E.C. Babila, and that's for the Expo Center. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, same sign. Motion carries. Two and three for the Expo Center. These are payout number four for Babila and Oosterban &amp; Sons. These are both final payouts. The dollar amounts are noted on the agenda. I'll throw that to the floor for final payouts.
Motion to approve both payouts mentioned.
Second. We have a motion of second for the payout, the final payouts for E.C. Babila and Oosterban &amp; Sons. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is 157 Franklin Street. That's just down the street here. I know we toured the property last week, and construction is coming on very nicely. It's starting to take shape as to how that's going to look on the inside, so we're very pleased with how that looks. What we're going to do here is we're going to do all the payouts for 157 as noted per the agenda, so we can put those up to the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion of second for six payouts for the 157 Franklin Street renovation per the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have the North County Courthouse. We're going to go 1 through 10, which are just payouts. So per the agenda, we're now looking at payouts number 1 through 10. Throw it to the floor.
Motion to approve payouts 1 through 10 per the agenda.
Second. We have a motion of second for payouts 1 through 10 per the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, same sign. Motion carries. The last one, 11, is Klettner Interior Systems. This is allowance authorization number two in the amount of $10,434. As we've talked about before, there is a budgeted amount in the budget for drywall. This is just us using that allowance, and we're formalizing that process to use that allowance that's already in the budget.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion of second for Klettner Interior Systems, allowance authorization number two for the North County Annex renovation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, same sign. Motion carries. Now we're going to move to the better stuff. Sheriff Dave Reynolds, come on forward with the crew.
And if anybody wants to see those details, they're online on the agenda.
Good morning.
Morning.
Want to introduce, this is not E.D., he's back there.
Hi. Good morning. I'm Kathy, the Assistant Counselor.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah. So what we got up first here, Dave, Sheriff, we got a request to purchase two vehicles from Lakeshore Motors. One's a jail van and then one's a patrol interceptor with equipment. There's the details. It'll be paid out of CCD fund. Any additional comments or questions?
I mean, the money's there, so just moved it around.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion of second to request purchase for two vehicles, for Lakeshore Motors, a jail van, and one patrol interceptor with equipment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, same sign. Motion carries. How many vehicles will we be selling? Is that, that's right around the corner, or did it already happen?
So normally, we do it in October because we got our vehicles so late because of the remodel year. We'll probably do it in like April, early May.
Okay.
And we'll probably do 10 or 11.
Just making a note here, Gary. Okay. Next up, we got North Shore Health Centers, and this is a substance abuse treatment program agreement. I'm assuming this is for the jail sheriff?
Yes.
Any questions of the sheriff or his staff on this agreement?
What will that entail exactly, Dave?
Well, that's, that is money that's being provided by a DOC, Department of Correction Grant. So we...
And this is really North Shore Purchase Frontline or...
Right. This is basically Frontline.
This is really the same as Frontline. It's just that they're now the same place.
They've been phenomenal in our jail.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion of second for North Shore Health Centers. This is a substance abuse treatment program agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have Auto Clear.
Aye.
Oh, the caring, geez. Okay, the caring place. I better start checking these off. Caring place. I think they're doing this already out there, right? And this is just another annual agreement?
Right.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion of second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. 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 Post, same sign. Motion carries. Now, Auto Clear. This is an annual maintenance agreement for the X-ray machines at the Porter County Courthouse in the amount of $4,950 and the North County Annex Building in the amount of $5,400. And I know they're there because I go through them all the time in Portage. They go off a lot.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion of second for an annual maintenance agreement with Auto Clear for the Porter County Courthouse and the North County Annex. All those in favor... All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. And then we have a request to purchase new police vehicles for 2020. This is a discussion, and I will throw it to you, Sheriff.
Well, we, obviously, we've been talking to Scott, the attorney, and it's our understanding that the money will be given to us. And what we want to do is buy hybrid vehicles with that money. We have, we have shown you the cost savings in that if we, if we, with each vehicle, the savings is $2,000 in gas per year. But if you look in the second page, if we did 10, it's $20,000. And then eventually, if we did the whole fleet, you're saving $93,000 a year in gas. We've done our due diligence. There's no question about performance. And we would be, this is the comment, this would be going strictly green, basically. And we'll, we would be, that all, there's almost every sheriff's office is looking at doing this. We would be the, as far as we know, we would be the first to do it. And, so I think that's kind of cool. But, you know, we, our concern was performance. The battery in this is, so it's a hybrid, so you don't plug it in. So, the battery is good for about at least 150,000 miles. I just don't see any downside.
I was, had a demonstration, or a basically demonstration of the sheriff's department, and these vehicles are purposeful made for this application. This is not the normal utility, or excuse me, excuse me, hybrid vehicle that you would purchase at the lot. These are specifically made hybrids for, by for, for the...
For police.
For the police application. Basically, the significant portion of the gas savings comes from the idling time that every officer on the road has, whether it's at stop signs, or at traffic stops, or sitting outside somebody's house with, you know, whatever it is while you're dealing with an issue inside. So, these numbers have been gone through pretty diligently. Again, purposeful made for police operations, and you're looking at, and I believe, you know, there's some amount of guesstimate as far as how many hours on a shift, but this is on the lower end of the spectrum. So, this hasn't been pushed up to the higher end. This actually may end up being more per vehicle than, than we know at this point. We're using some averages for police forces, kind of broader, so everyone's a little bit different. But, you know, this is pretty exciting, and again, it's pretty, pretty unique and special. So, I think it's going well.
What's the price of the vehicle?
It's, the price on the vehicle is $37,643.
Is that significantly more than the normal one?
I'm going to say about $3,000.
And then, did anybody ask what the cost of the battery replacement would be?
Yeah.
$150,000?
That's a good question. But we, the way we're looking at this, we're not going to be in...
Right, we're going to get rid of them before we talk.
It has the eight-year, $100,000 mile warranty on all the components that matters.
And we've been 100, 120s when we've been about rotating.
Right, so it's perfect for us.
Okay.
Just want to make sure.
So, it's paper itself in a couple of years.
Year and a half, hopefully.
Does that affect the ma, our maintenance, how we're set up, you know, in our maintenance department to, you know, to service the current vehicles that we have? I mean, is the oil change is different? Is...
Nothing changes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
I think the only issue we had left was, I think in the sheriff's budget, you guys have about, can't remember which budget it is, each of $50,000 in one of your budgets for cars, right? And then we have $350 in ours for cars, right? And so, I think basically the motion is to purchase as many of these we can for $400,000. And when, if we order them, when are we expecting delivery? I know you were a long time this year, because of the model year change.
Much quicker, tight end of people.
Yeah. And that's why you got your sheriff's sale kind of tag along with that.
Gotcha.
That all makes all ties not getting together.
Yep.
So, how many, how many vehicles are you intending to retire?
Well, we like, we know we don't have enough money to buy what we want. And then we're looking at right now, taking some money out of some forfeiture or something. We get 50 from council. But if we can get through this, and you can show, it'd be a lot easier yourself next year, if we come in and actually show you how much money we save.
Sure.
And then we could figure out maybe getting more, you know...
Well, as we can reduce the gas and lube line, I think in the auditor's budget, because of gas, the sheriff's department is saving, it makes it a whole lot easier to potentially make the argument to move that over to purchase more. I think this one was set up to buy 11, and I think we have enough to buy nine, as we sit here right now.
But we're trying to work out something to get the other two.
Right.
Because we, we hired two, two new policemen from the, the SRO thing in Portage. So, we actually have two more policemen. So, we're trying to, we're trying to do the best we can to accommodate them.
And those, those two new patrol officers, those service just the school?
Yes.
Is that contract covered the cost of their vehicle? That could get expensive. Anyway, so you're looking, Dave, you're just looking to purchase the, how many cars, you know, we can get within a $400,000 budget?
That's what I'm asking. But I, we wanted to tell you, we wanted to be transparent and tell you, this is what we're doing.
Yeah.
Because this is kind of out of the box a little bit.
Right.
But I'm, I'm with you. I mean, I think this is a very exciting thing. I think eventually, I think all your county vehicles will be hybrid. You know, because if you can show that you're saving that much money on gas, and you're not compromising performance, you know, it, the $3,000 is going to be, it's more than worth it.
What is our annual, our cost for gas? Do we, does anybody know?
We budget $350,000 a year right now. I don't know how that breaks out.
That's probably something we're have to be pretty clear on, if we're going to say it's going to save something.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you have, if you're saving 100, eventually, down the road, you're saving that much money, you know, that'd be a good thing for you.
And then also, this is the last one, because you guys have, if we got, let's say we end up with nine or 11, however many we end up with, if still not, it's probably what, 10, 15% of your total cars, maybe not patrol cars, but total vehicles, somewhere in there. So, it's not as if, you know, if we have an issue, we've kind of towed in slightly here to see if this works. And if, we're going to get a year to see how everything goes, and they perform the way they're been sold, that they will.
Are we going to, are we going to accept the motion?
We don't have to do anything, or is it, they just bring it?
No.
Okay, because it said discussion. I didn't know. Okay.
Yeah.
I have a question to the sheriff.
Please come forward, give your name. Like, there's a microphone, your name and address, and you can...
I am the Executive Director of the MS4 Partnership. There is some money out there, grant money, available through South Shore Clean Cities, through the Department of Energy. You have the matching available. There's also some funds available through the Volkswagen-Salomon agreement for, specifically for Northwest Indiana, that it might be helpful to look into that. And I can give you...
Thank you. I thought you were going to come up and yell at me.
Don't yell at us.
You don't sit up here enough. We take that of you. Thank you, Reggie.
So, we see the motion to approve.
Yeah.
Which needs to be included, up to 400?
Yes.
Motion to approve the purchase of the hybrid vehicles up to $400,000.
Second. We have a motion in second for the request to purchase new police vehicles for 2020, being energy-efficient utility-type cars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Attorney Chuck Lookman, who's here representing the Porter County Airport Board. Good morning, Attorney Lookman.
Good morning, folks. Thank you for hearing me today, on behalf of the Porter County Municipal Airport Authority, and also for all of your support to another wonderful asset in this county, just east of here. I was in front of you three years ago, asking for a resolution to approve revenue bonds for refunding and capital improvements for the airport, in the amount of $4.5 million. We did not, you approved it, but we did not complete that transaction. It was taxable at the time. There are a couple other issues going on, and the authority thought it deserved to wait. The good news is, interest, as you know...
Yep.
...has gone down. The bonds that are outstanding to be refunded, mature January 1, 2028. And between now and then, the interest rate is from 5.4% to 5.6. We have secured an interest rate for this bond issue. Now, it's floating to the closing, and we are hopeful to close this month, about 3.17%. It's wonderful, really. We're very excited. We will save, over the next nine years or so, about $162,000, taxpayer money. And we will end up having approximately $2.2 million for capital projects, which will include revenue-producing tea hangers, improvements to the taxiway, including all sewer, water, NIPSCO and that, that can accommodate more construction and economic development in the county. And we also have some money in there for land acquisition, if we need it, for the runway protective zone, out east of the airport. So, again, we are, you know, we're excited about this project, and we thought it best to come back and get another approval and update you. I've spoken to Vicki Urbannick. When we close, of course, if we have your blessing, we will get all of the amortization tables, closing documents for her. I understand there's new accounting requirements coming up, and she's already talked to our manager, Kyle Kubler. And that's pretty much it, unless you have any questions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in second for a bond offering for the Porter County Municipal Airport, for the revenue refunding and improvement bonds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would be remiss, as I look at the three of you, I see three people have been integral to the South Shoreline in this county. All have served and served, and have been a very important part of three transformation, of transformational projects that are going on now.
Yep.
I happen to represent them, and everyone's appreciative of your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Good news out at the airport. Okay, next up, we have our 911 Director, Tony Stua, up the fortus now, as we have for Motorola Solutions. This is a change order in the amount of $893,680.69, due to delay in system connectivity to the IPSC core.
This is to revise the project's final acceptance milestone to December 30, 2019, due to the delay in our towers and the system all being connected. This process has been in drought for a couple of years. So, this brings us to a, the change order isn't the dollar amount. That was the original dollar amount. The change order is actually just changing the final acceptance date. And while that's important, that is when our warranty, or our 20 years of warranty, begins. So, the change order is oddly worded, because it is what it is. But at the end of the day, it's just changing the final, the final acceptance date, which sets when our warranty and things like that go into effect.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second for a change order for Motorola Solutions, for connectivity to the IPSC core. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. If you all remember, the operation of the three towers that we bought several years ago, was delayed. It wasn't really, wasn't really anybody's fault, per se, other than we had a very difficult time finding copper wires that would connect up to these towers, that had the redundancy and the capability of being able to handle this robust, robust data that goes through these lines. A lot of these lines are very, over 100 years old, that were coming in. And so, we went through hundreds and hundreds of pairs of lines to be able to find the ones that would actually work. The lines were the responsibility of the state, state program that we entered into an agreement with. So, it was really nothing that we could really control from our end. It was more of a blocking and tackling event at each tower location. We've gotten through that. One of the things that we were concerned about is the agreement that we signed with the state gave us 20 years of maintenance. It took too long to get these fired up. So, we're just correcting and pushing out that maintenance agreement to when we actually started. And that's really what this is, is for. So, just wanted to clarify that, because I know there's some other people out there in Porter County government that feels they were responsible, or whatever, for the cure. And we're just trying to tell everybody that it was a little bit different than that.
Well, they're not in Porter County.
Yeah, yeah, right. So, right, not in Porter County government. So, just wanted to...
I know, I was looking around, saying, who?
Yeah.
Who?
Yeah. So, anyway, next up, part of the implementation of the 700 megahertz towers, once we got the towers up, and we got them working, we found that we have a problem getting the signal in our oldest building in Porter County, and that is the courthouse. And...
And only the first two floors.
And only the first two floors. I think it, once again, gives you an indication of how well these buildings were built over 100 years ago, that you can't get a signal through there. So, the next thing that is up on our agenda is talking about buying a repeater that basically goes in the courthouse, that will allow the signal for those radios, for court security and everybody else to be able to talk to 911 and everything. Right now, we cannot get a signal in that building, because it's, it's like four-foot thick walls. It's, it's good that the building's built that way, but it's caused us other problems in the new era of technology. So, hopefully, this information here, and what we act and try to do here, will satisfy that. Is that correct, Tony?
Yes. What the bid, bidirectional amplifier will do, will capture the signal, amplify it, and broadcast it out, as well as any signal coming into the courthouse, captures that on the outside, amplify it, and broadcast it to the radios that are being used in the first two floors.
Tony, why is that the, the difference in the, in the price of this thing?
When I spoke to Motorola, they believe they're using goods that are of a different reality. But when I also spoke with Bartronics, they have, will be sufficient for the use we have. We don't need to be covering multiple floors, other than the two to three floors. They believe by going with Motorola's quote, that would be covering a high-rise for another facility, maybe like Ivy Tech, larger span that you need to cover. So, they believe theirs is more appropriate for the level that we require.
Motion to approve the Bartronics vote.
I would just ask that it's made contingent upon council approving the additional out of the surcharge fund we paid for this. And that's on the council agenda. I believe Melanie and this 911 staff have worked to get that on the, the next council.
I amend my motion to include that.
Second. We have a motion in second for a bidirectional amplifier battery backup system for the downtown Porter County Courthouse. Low bid, and responsible bid goes to Bartronics for $80,792.38. This is contingent upon county council approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries.
Hypothetically, because I don't, I don't understand, so it's the reason I'm asking this question, is, is if we put this system in there, and the Motorola's right, it, they needed, we needed something larger than what Bartronics is going to provide, something more sophisticated. And it doesn't work, what's our, what's our choices here then?[1765.62]
For that, Bartronics, when I spoke to Motorola, Motorola cannot give a reason why their cost is more. Bartronics believes that the cost that Motorola-
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Motorola can't provide an accurate account as to why their cost is that much more. When they, they originally claimed that Bartronics was not going to provide all the connections and the battery backup, but we have documentation, verification through, through at Bartronics that they are providing everything, all the connections. That's why they have a separate quote just for the backup batteries to make sure everything's included. That's something also that was not included with the Motorola.
And also, to my understanding, earlier in the, late spring, early summer, there was actually a study done and that's why, how we know that it's only the first two floors of the courthouse-
Correct.
And a portion of the JDC. And so I think Bartron, so this isn't Motorola or Bartronics guessing-
No.
-so what the signals are or aren't or the strength. It's been verified that three, four, and five of the valvulars in courthouse is working now and one and two are intermittent.
Correct.
And it's, there's portions of JDC that are intermittent and or not working, but small portions. So there was, there was a study done. This isn't, this isn't a guessing game. So I think Bartronics is quote, is more geared towards exactly what the study suggested we needed. Motorola, on review of it, it does, if you're going to try to fill in the gaps of it, it does seem to be a one-size-fits-all solution that maybe would work for this whole building also if we, if that were to be determined it needed. But it's not, they didn't have the ability necessarily to dial down their options to something that's only what that particular building needs.
Overkill.
Correct.
Pretty much. If there's something else that's, that's occurred that we're not aware of, that would be the only area where we might have a deficiency in the radio, or the radio being broadcast properly. But it's not something that had been in the study before. By reflection of what we've done, the study and the different parcels and where we had anything missing was a corner field out there where we still received data. So we'd still receive audio in there as well. But for the courthouse, that's-
Let me ask you a question. You've, you're, we haven't moved into the 15 Franklin yet.
Correct. 157.
Or 157 Franklin. Are we, are we clear that we're going to be able to dispatch out of there? Because those, that building is, is built, you know, it's a steel structure, built very well.
So with the center that we'll be moving to, all of our radio travel will be going through outside of the facility. We're not broadcasting from within the center. Ours is going to go out to one of the towers.
So you're not worried about anything coming into the building?
No. All of that's going to be coming in through a, either a T1 connection or a fiber connection and it'll be routed into the center directly. It's coming to-
We've already routed fiber to the building.
Yeah.
Well, I was, I was worried about radio waves, you know.
We should be, we should be fine on that because everything's going to be broad, you know.
From an off, straight out on the street.
No, we should be fine with that.
Okay.
I would also like to point out too, that several years ago, when we went through the gyrations of getting, at least from the county's perspective, the rate, the new radios that we had to purchase for highway, for a lot of other smaller fire departments and other things, we sort of ran into the same situation with Motorola and Bartronics. Bartronics, DF Johnson radios versus Motorola radios. The DF Johnson radios were, we felt just as good, but much less price. And we were also buying from a Porter County vendor that does a lot of work for us at 911. So we, when we get into Motorola and Bartronics, these type of things, certain situations, we see large price differences this way. But it's good that we have a local vendor here that knows this stuff, has alternative radios and alternative things for us to be able to do. And so it's a good check and balance for the county, so we're not overpaying for these type of services. So this, we're sort of used to this, but we don't like it, but it's just the way it is and we have to keep mining the pricing and keep asking and, and-
That's a huge advantage for them, them to be located here.
Yes.
They're not coming out of Indianapolis.
Right. 15 minutes away. So I know they were out there a lot when we were cutting over the radios and it's nice to have local people here that really know their business and they do up there. So next up, we have the 911 Employee Policy Supplement. And do we want to give somewhat of an overview on that or?
Yeah, so the County Adoptments Handbook, that's countywide. 911 is a 24-hour, 365 operation. So therefore, it has unique employee issues that need to be addressed outside of the, or as a supplement to the rest of the employee's handbook. And only those issues that basically are different or unique to 911. This has been in process, unfortunately, for a year. So this is a pretty good milestone in the sense that I think we'll now, we now have the, upon approval, we have the employee handbook, we have the supplement for 911. I think now, for the first time in several years, we'll actually have one sheet of music for all of us to be playing off of. And if we need to modify or make small revisions, now we at least know where we're all starting from, the same start gate. And this would effectively, if the commissioners were to approve this, this would effectively eliminate any policies or employee policies or supplemental policies that were implemented in the past and have caused some confusion. So this would kind of get us to a clean slate of, we have the master county employee handbook along with the 911 supplement. And those would be the two documents that would, that the employees of 911 would be under. I know that quite a bit of work was done before Tony was here. Tony has spent quite a bit of time on it since he's been here. I know HR has spent an inordinate amount of time on this, unfortunately. And so I'm happy to see it on the agenda in a final format.
Me too.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the 911 Employee Policy Supplement. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries.
I'd just like to just provide, the commissioner's as well, with just some statistical information how 911's been doing over the past month. This gives data as to how many calls we receive, process, dealt with police and fire. We'll be putting this on the Facebook page on the website.
Good.
That way the residents understand what 911's doing for them and how we've been doing. One thing I would like to highlight is the fact that we answer our calls within 10 seconds. 99% of 21% of the time, just last month, majority of ours has been over 99% of the time. The standards for our industry are actually, we answer 90% of our calls within 10 seconds and 95% of our calls within 20 seconds. We are well above, beyond that. Our goal is to hit 100 again. I think this happened a few years ago, but it hasn't been there since and we're going to work towards that.
Good.
So thank you very much.
Thanks for all your hard work, Tony.
How are you settling in?
Working towards, trying to determine how everything's working in the center. Trying to take direction to make sure we are organizing everything from the admin level side down and work it where everyone is on the same page right now.
I see you don't have any gray hair yet, so you must be doing-
I don't have enough hair showing, so you won't see it. It's all right here. Thank you.
The one stat that jumps off of here, not me, is that almost 80% of our 911 calls are coming in from mobile.
Yes. Majority, and I would recommend anybody here who has not signed up, please, when you see this on either the website or on our Facebook, smart911.com, you can download it on your phone, either from iOS or from Google Play. You have additional information input in there and 911 has that information that we wouldn't have based on a normal 911 call if you disconnect.
You put layout of your, your house. There's a lot of things that you can do, so when that call comes up, they'll know where you're at, what, they'll have a layout of your house, they'll know, there's as much data as you want to give them.
And we cannot access that information unless you call 911. Once you dial 911, we have that information presented to the call taker. And if you were to call, have a problem breathing, disconnect, we rename your address, only information you put in there and they request an update every six months, either via text message, email, or phone call.
Just housekeeping and those tools are available to us out there. And I think the, you know, us moving our website to more mobile-friendly, I think everybody can see where this is all starting to go. Unfortunately, it's the sign of the times, but we're trying as a government to stay on the forefront and give our citizens the options to have these type of tools that could save a life down the road or save time. And that's what this 911's all about. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, Lance Bella. We go from 911 to emergencies. It's going to get better though. Good morning, Lance.
Morning.
What, Lance, what you got here, Martin Security System?
So all this is, is the same monitoring we've had in the past, but we've gone from, as you have orchestrated, from having multi-year contracts to a single year. So the contract was up, it's the same price, it's all been budgeted for, it's just renewing it.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. Bill, Melissa, a second for Martin Security System Monitoring Agreement. The amount of $30 a month for the Emergency Management Administration building out on Highway 2. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Lance.
Thank you.
Next up, Kevin Breitski, surveyor. Good morning, Kevin.
Good morning.
You have a request to purchase a 2020 Transit 250 cargo van, make short forward, government price in the amount of $30,692. How are you paying for that?
Out of section corner perpetuation funds.
Okay.
As all of our vehicles have been bought out of it.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
This vehicle's going to replace a 2,000 three-quarter ton van, so.
And then that van will go in the share sale in April.
Absolutely.
Okay. There you go, Wood.
Do you already have the money appropriated?
I do.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Kevin. That's, no, 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 no. Okay, Vicki Urbannick coming around the podium. Now we get to see her. Set of the side view.
Yes.
Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning. A few items for your consideration today that relate to a very significant endeavor about to commence in the county auditor's office. Pursuant to state legislation, we are going to be one of 14 Indiana counties that will be transitioning to GAAP financial reporting. GAAP stands for Generally Accepted Accounting Principles. And if you're an investor and you read your financial statements, you are reading GAAP statements. They are much more detailed, complex, extensive than the current county annual financial reports. They are going to be much more labor-intensive to prepare. We can't just press a computer button and it comes out. I believe it's going to be the most significant project that I have dealt with as county auditor, and I think it's going to be one of the most comprehensive requirements ever to affect county auditors. Now, to the best of my knowledge, every county that's making this transition in 2020 is contracting out for the work. We are going to attempt, and I emphasize attempt, to do this project in-house. I think that we have a few things going for us that allows us to attempt to do this project. So to help prepare us for the real thing next year, one of the big projects that happened in our office very quietly this year was that we put together what's called test statements, or what I'm calling test statements. Basically, we took our 2018 financials that have already gone through audit and converted them to GAAP as much as we possibly could do. And the reason why I wanted us to do this was to get an idea of what we're up against next year. If everyone else is contracting out, what are we going to be facing? What are the challenges? What are the questions? What do we feel comfortable with and what are we somewhat lacking in? So that's why I'm here before you today. I am asking to approve a contract with Baker Tilly, a CPA firm, to conduct a peer review of our test statements. Basically, we want to give them these test statements and have them rip it apart. Basically, we would explain how we came up with certain things and then they would be telling us whether we did it right or whether we did something that we should be thinking a little bit differently about. The goal here is that we want to do a good job. When we do these reports, not only are they audited, but many people do read county financial reports, believe it or not. Financial advisors read them, the state examiners read them, bond credit agencies read them, and also businesses potentially moving into Porter County. This is a snapshot of where we are financially. So this contract is not to exceed $10,000 and it would be funded through the auditors and eligible homestead funds, so there's no impact on the general fund. Now, can I, should I go to the next thing?
That's the amendment or the?
The, yes. Also, as part of GAAP statements, capital assets are going to play a major part in our statements. Right now, we are required just to report certain totals, but under GAAP, we are going to have to go into much, much more detail. And so I wanted to review the current policy. It was adopted in 2004 and it definitely needed to be updated. For example, the policy says that we capitalize at 10,000. We don't capitalize at 10,000. We actually go to 5,000, which is the Government Accounting Standards Board recommended threshold. And there's other things that we wanted to put in the policy, including the responsibilities of county departments to work with us in ensuring that we have everything we need on our capital asset plan. And today, there's been several discussions about new vehicles and things.
Yeah.
All of them are going to be on this plan. And so we want it to be as comprehensive as possible.
What about, what about like equipment?
Yes.
Same deal.
That's all capitalized.
So we have to age it and is there aging and all that that's?
Depreciation. We will handle the depreciation for the departments. We need them to provide us a comprehensive inventory.
I would, I would think that this information would also help us when we go to insure everything.
Yes.
That we would know, actually, we'd actually know what we had.
Exactly.
Well, not a good place to start because it's on our insured list now.
Right, right. And along the same lines, this is the last thing. I'm really happy about this.
You're doing well, Vicki. You're doing well.
This is not necessarily for you to approve, but on November 21st, we're going to have a training with county departments. One section's going to be on internal controls and that will be followed by fixed assets and you. We want to explain to departments the new reporting requirements and what they, what they need to do to help us ensure that we have the most comprehensive fixed asset plan possible.
How does this work, Vicki, with our software we just bought? Is it, is there no?
Okay.
And I, I don't want to get too in the weeds, but I just-
Right. Right now, our financial software basically can generate the AFR that the state requires. It does not generate GAAP because GAAP reporting is much more analytical. There's a lot of calculation computation. However, there's much that the software can do in terms of classifying various government funds, fiduciary funds, proprietary funds. And we've been working with LAU on what we think they can do to help their counties. And because of the input that we have given them, they are not charging us for their GAAP updates. We're saving about $7,500 in that regard.
Are they using like a report writer or something that they're putting in with the? Just curious.
There's different components that they're going to be adding.
Okay.
So that, let me give you-
So the software update is what it would be?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I got you.
So that what counties can do is that they can run a report and they will be able to aggregate all their different government funds into the different categories that we have to, between special revenue and permanent funds and capital project funds. Right now, no counties are doing that, but LAU can do that for us. However, then it's up to people to take that information and convert it to the accrual and modified accrual basis of accounting, which the software really doesn't do because we don't handle the financial accounting that way. Yeah, I can go on and on.
I know, I know. This is, this is a big move.
It is. And also, we are going to be giving our test statements to the State Board of Accounts. They have graciously agreed to look at them. They are not going to be analyzing the numbers because that's going to be next year when they actually audit us. So what we're trying to do is jumpstart the process and to sort of audit us now before we go to the, to the real thing next year.
Well, being elected official, who I've been up here five years now and have somewhat struggled with fund accounting, because I come from the business world.
Yes.
This is going to help me out, I think, a little bit better. I know, I know we got a long way to get there, but I think, I personally feel that it's a good move and I think I know all the work and everything. And I'd also like to say, Vicki, too, that because the state has picked us as one of the 14, I think that's a true testament to you and your department and what you've done up here, which has been nothing short of miraculous in my world. I, you know, you- I, you know, you, I truly feel that way, and I want to congratulate you for being able to be selected by the state to, to do that. That's big.
Well, I appreciate that. However, we weren't selected. It was state lawmakers that set the threshold. It's 100,000 or more population.
Okay.
So.
Well, good luck.
You would have been.
You would have been selected no matter what.
Thank you.
You should still go on with it. I don't care if anybody talks. You just said.
But thank you, I appreciate that. But I do have to say, credit goes to the staff of the auditor's office because they really are taking on a lot of additional duties here, so.
Well, the real bottom line is you're saving us several hundred thousand dollars by not bringing in an outside consultant, and you're saving us 7,500 because we're actually helping our software vendor get their stuff right because that's where we're at, so.
Good, please.
Whether the state invited you or not, you've saved a whole lot of money.
And headaches.
Motion to approve the Baker Tilly contract.
Second. We have a motion is second for Baker Tilly. This is a contract for peer review for 2018 test statements, not to exceed $10,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose sign, sign. Motion carries. Next is up an amendment to the Porter County capitalization threshold policy.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion is second for that amendment to the Porter County's capitalization threshold, threshold policy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose sign, sign. Motion carries. And last one, well, we've already had that discussion, haven't we?
Yes.
So we're there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki, for everything.
And whenever you want, I'm willing to kind of take you to a tour through our financial statements. It's exciting, there are balance sheets and.
I can't wait.
Statements.
I'm excited. I look at this stuff every day, it's so familiar.
Exactly. Exactly. Your main seat.
Gives us a little bit better pulse on how we're doing.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Vicki. Madam Auditor. Next up, IT Don Welson. Morning, Don. Now, these are two quotes for Electronic Security Systems at 157 Franklin. We have Videotech at a quote of $30,507.78 and ATN Technology at $44,774. Correct, Don?
Yes.
What's your thoughts?
We recommend Videotech on this one.
Okay. Responsible little bidder.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion is second for Videotech for the Electronic Security System at 157 Franklin, awarded to Videotech at $30,507.78. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose sign, sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Don.
They've just made one, one small change yesterday. Videotech came back and they changed the maintenance agreement. It normally would go 90 days after the install before they'd start charging us. They've changed that to a 12-month now, 12-month period.
Excellent.
Good.
Good work.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Don. Next up, we have the Development Stormwater Management Group. We got Bob Thompson and the county engineer, Michael Novotny. Good morning, gentlemen. We meet again.
Good morning.
So what do you got up first on the agenda here? I'll let you guys read, my voice is going.
This is Ryan Trout Associates, asking for an agreement to allow access to State Road Two and Heveland Road for an archaeological investigation, which will be part of the proposed roundabout. Last meeting, you signed the one over for NDOT to allow them to go forward and be able to start removing trees and stuff. This is the, that was specific to NDOT. This one is their consultant subcontractor for doing the archaeological investigations for the environmental study. It's, remember, there were, they did find, find some foundation to the old Porter County home.
Was that under the existing tube?
That was under the existing tube, part of it, so.
How are they gonna, are they gonna close traffic down and cut the, I mean?
That, I'm not really sure. This is, right now, is allowing them to get into the proposed right-of-way area.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion is second for Ryan Trout Associates. This is an agreement to allow access to State Road Two and Heveland Road for an archaeological investigation, which is, will be, will be part of the proposed roundabout at that intersection. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose sign, sign. Motion carries.
Well, the next two are CCMG grant agreements.
Yes, they are CCMG grant agreements. There are two separate grant agreements because we kept them out for bidding purposes on that. One of them is for preventative maintenance type measures on its ceiling of the roads, and the other one is for actual mill and asphalt structural overlays.
If you guys want to do both of those at the same time, you can.
Okay, I'll throw it to the board for two and three.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion is second for items number two and number three on the commissioner's agenda. This is local road and bridge matching grants for two projects. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose sign, sign. Motion carries.
Our next item is an invitation to bid. We're just announcing now that we're going to be going out and requesting bid invites, sealed bids for these particular projects that we have with the CCMG money. For numbers two and three on the agenda.
Okay.
Just need a motion and a second.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion is second for an invitation to bid on the individual grant agreement projects. This will be advertised in January of 2020. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose sign, sign. Motion carries. We got Gary Up Construction up next.
Yes, this is a change order for guardrail end treatments on Bridge 126 of 700 North over Salt Creek. Staff requested that the guardrail end treatments be changed over, which was originally on the plan.
And I wanted to clarify something on this change order as well. Essentially, there's 20 items on this change order that are just settling final measured quantities.
Yep.
There's really just one change that's being requested as a part of this, and that's in the amount of that $13,331.93. We're changing the end treatment on, on the guardrail.
On the guardrails.
Yep.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion is second for a change order approval for guardrail and treatments on Bridge Number 126. This is at 700 North over Salt Creek. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose sign, sign. Motion carries. And next up, we have an ordinance pertaining to department fees.
Correct. Now that we've added highway engineering, we have all the engineering up in the office and everything like that. Originally, our fee ordinance dealt with a lot of the plant commission type fees that we'd have for applications, BZA, building permits, and such. So we did have the independent stormwater engineer if it was sent out to a consultant for particular hourly rates. Now, what we have done is we're trying to bring in everybody inclusive on that. We did tweak some of the plant commission fees on that, but we pretty much left them alone, just a few of them. Now we've added actual stormwater engineering, so that way, we're trying to do a lot of this in-house. We've added the hourly rates for all of the staff members on this. Again, we're going to go back to two reviews. If you don't make it in two reviews, the third one, we're starting to charge you the hourly rate. So now this ordinance actually has the hourly rates on that.
And just to give everybody what we're talking about, right now, somebody comes in for a subdivision proposal, the stormwater plan is sent to a list of third parties potentially.
Correct.
With a fee attached to it in our current fee ordinance.
Correct.
And those are reviewed by that list of approved vendors. This is kind of the follow-up to what the council did at budget time by approving another engineer into the department.
Correct.
And as part of that, it was we were going to attempt to bring these reviews in-house and have this, part of this revision is to bring those fees in-house also. And then what you're getting to now, when I interrupted you, was the amount of times individuals need to have their plans reviewed before they can make it pass to approved.
Correct.
Basically, we've had a history. We've done this long enough to know that we have a history that some of these reviews can get pretty out of control, let's say it that way, meaning seven, nine, 10 reviews later. So in an effort to try to have our local engineers put their best foot forward as soon as possible, we have, what, two reviews, and after that, there's additional fees that start getting added on. Is that how we've developed this fee ordinance?
Correct. Also on there is the highway engineering section with the right-of-way cut permits, the driveway permits. We, Mike and I have been talking, we've been wanting to totally revamp that whole section with the permitting process and with the new position we're going to be having in there as far as right-of-way manager. We're hoping to have whole new permit forms, looking at that, and some of our inspection processes coming up. As you'll notice, there's two different prices for commercial drives. It's all dependent on what needs to be done. For an example, we have costs for boring underneath the road and asking for maintenance surety on that to make sure, so. Just trying to really ramp up our highway engineering section.
Yep. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Well, this, this is an ordinance.
Yes.
So we're going to have to go into a public, public hearing here. What we're going to do right now is we're going to suspend the commissioner's meeting. We're going to open up a public hearing. What this will allow, we're going to give three opportunities for people to speak in favor of this ordinance, and we'll give three opportunities for people to speak against this ordinance if they so desire. So the first one we will put up is if there's anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance, please come forward, state your name and your address by the microphone. The second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance? And with that, we'll now flip to the other side. We'll give a first call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? And with that, the public hearing is closed. We'll now reopen the commissioner's meeting, and I'll throw it to the Board of Commissioners.
Now I'll make the motion to approve.
Yes, second. We have a motion and a second for an ordinance pertaining to department fees for stormwater and highway engineering in plan. This is first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose sign, sign. Motion carries. Second reading will be brought up on the next commissioner's meeting. So we can now move to the next part of the agenda, which is Timberland Farms Phase Three.
This is accepting the maintenance surety for three years on Timberland Farms Phase Three. We've been out, inspected the infrastructure. The infrastructure is in place, other than the guardrail at the end of the cul-de-sac. They gave us the contract showing that that was in. The, we wrote a little report on this. What this does is it allows the county, or we're following the UDO requirements in there, maintenance for three years. This isn't acceptance, full acceptance of the roads.
Just preliminary acceptance.
Preliminary acceptance. So what we're doing is we're green, we'll snowplow it and everything, but if anything comes up saying a curb settles around a manhole, pavement fails, the developer's still responsible. After three years, we will go back and re-inspect everything on this to make sure it is functioning properly like the plan states. Then we will be back for full acceptance of.
Is this just binder?
No.
This is for surface and everything?
Surface and everything.
Okay.
And this is only Phase Three of Timberland Farms?
Correct.
Correct.
It's a smaller portion.
Correct.
So this is $61,000 of secured funds for the next three years to make sure that there's not a.
Maintenance happening.
For maintenance, whether it be cracking or settling or whatever the case may be.
Correct.
And you've approved that amount? You've done your estimates and?
Yes, and to be clear, this does not include the stormwater infrastructure.
Right.
Or the open space. Those will be left with the conservative district.
Conservative district.
So it's just the roads.
Gotcha.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion is second for Timberland Farms Phase Three Maintenance Acceptance, Acceptance from the county. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose sign, sign. Motion carries. Next up, American Structure Point, Willow Creek Road Supplement Agreement.
This adds to the original agreement that we have in place. This particular addition is now looking at doing a route analysis and an environmental study going south of 130 down to US Highway 30. So I believe, I don't have the exact amount on it, I believe.
The exact amount is $195,235 to the increase to add those two issues to.
Correct.
Existing Structure Point contract. This contract is basically on, on hold until we say proceed, and the goal here is to keep mining our other avenues of funding, such as NERC.
Correct.
Yep.
So this, if we, if the commissioners were to approve this, it puts us in a position to allow NERC, for us and NERC to talk and to attempt to have some more funds dedicated to the project.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion is second for Willow Creek Road Supplemental Agreement to the main agreement to American Structure Point. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose sign, sign. Motion carries. Bridge 84?
Bridge 84, this is 800 south over Branch of Dog Lake Ditch. This is opening of sealed bids. This is for reconstruction of the bridge. It's removal of the existing bridge there and construction of a new bridge.
Was there an engineer's estimate?
Yes. There was. Neither Mike nor I like it, or agree with it, I should say, or maybe I should let Mike.
You didn't agree with your own estimate?
No.
Well, our consultant put together.
That's what I was.
Our consultant put together an estimate. So my, my estimate on this is about $790,000. So we'll see how.
Over or under?
Yeah, we'll see how this turns out.
The bridge looks excellent, by the way.
Which one?
Seven hundred.
It does.
Yeah, I drove over it, it's real nice. Okay, first bid, get the cheaters on here. Reece Riley Construction, their quote, or their bid is, base bid is $813,697.50. Jim wants to see him figure it out. Next bid is Ellis, is it Ellis?
Ellis.
Yeah. Ellis Construction.
There's an LLC, and there's also a incorporated.
Yeah, there's two of them. So this is Ellis Construction, Inc., and their quote bid is 829,426.51. Next bid is Dunnett Bay Construction Company, and their quote is $976,782.95. Oh, that's Reece Riley's deal. And this is J, is it JCI?
JCI, yes.
JCI Bridge Group of LaPorte. Their quote bid is 826,526.91. This is Gary Up Construction. Bid is 797,500. And this is LaPorte Construction, Inc., and their bid is 917,854.68. sixty-eight. And that's it.
We would like to take these then upstairs and get back to you next meeting with our recommendation. We want to make sure that they're all-
Review for responsibility.
Responsiveness.
Send responsibility.
Looks like your quoting range is pretty tight. That means we have good plans, right?
And not, not too bad of an estimate for a stormwater engineer on a, on a budget.
See, you can ride that bass. I like that.
Pretty good for a water guy.
Pretty good for a water guy.
Mike, we qualify for any federal funds, so we'll-
Uh, this one's funded with, with local funds. This is the last, right, out of our-
This is, this is the last bridge out of the capital improvement projects.
Okay.
Yes.
Not this one, but-
This is one of the three.
The upcoming ones that you guys will see will be better-
Correct.
Better funded.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, Bridge one thousand one. This is on West Street. It's over Salt Creek. It's right here in the city of Alvaro. We're just announcing, announcement of invitations to receive sealed bids for the construction of this project. We have the title page for the, um, plan set for the commissioners and auditor signature on that, but we are planning to go out to request sealed bids.
Is the engineering, does the engineering for that bridge include the sidewalk? That, does it have a sidewalk component to it? Because as you go down there, you see the cones and everything. It, it really narrows down.
Um, what this does, it, it, we're not doing anything as far as the deck. I don't believe, I believe this is all scour measures-
Okay.
And reinforcement of the embankments, especially, I believe, on the northwest corner.
Northwest.
Yes. So, it's, it's a lot of work with the stream channel and the-
And approach work, I believe.
Approach work, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Do we need to make a motion for that?
Yeah, we just need to make a motion on the announcement.
Uh, motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second, uh, uh, on Bridge one thousand one, West Street over Salt Creek. This is announcement of invitation to receive sealed bids for construction. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Are you, you're done?
Yep.
We are done. Unless you've got anything else.
I got another estimate for you, but we'll talk offline.
Sounds good.
Okay, last one. Porter County Right to Life, Jen Manu, Jen Matthew, Director. This is a request to use the north side of the courthouse grounds on Saturday, January eighteenth, two thousand twenty, from eleven-thirty in the morning until one-thirty in the afternoon for a prayer on the square vigil. They have three or four banners between three to eight feet long, a portable erected cross, a podium with a sound system, and one or two tables. They're expecting about fifty people. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve.
Will we, are they here? Is Jen here? Jen, come on up.
Yeah, okay.
Did we have some requirements before with the, um, sound system, how loud it was?
Mm-hmm. Good morning!
Can't remember if they were, what they did.
It was Saturday.
Well, it was about dealing with-
Saturday.
Well, I think we were reminding of the Valpo City noise ordinance as part of the issue there.
Well, I think it was being heard inside the building, too.
But this is Saturday, so, right?
Yep.
It's just Saturday.
You see the cops pull up? Just screw it. Turn it down. Turn it down.
Absolutely.
Um, any questions of Jen?
It's, uh, I think we've done it for about seven years, and it's a very peaceful, um, event, so.
Good.
All right.
I think we have a motion.
And a second.
And a second. Okay, so, we have a motion and a second for Porter County Right to Life using the courthouse grounds on Saturday, January eighteenth, from eleven-thirty to one-thirty, as noted on our agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a great event.
Thank you.
You bet. Uh, anybody else wishing to address this for? Ah, sir, please stand up, give your name, your address.
You with him?
You're all together?
No, no.
Okay. Okay, we'll get you next. You bet.
James Jewell, seven ninety-six Timberline Parkway. Um, I want to know why Porter County doesn't have a noise ordinance when our other municipalities do. Portage, um, Alvaro, Chesterton, they all have noise ordinances. Porter County doesn't. I live out in South Haven, across the street from my house is that McDonald's. They're on Route Six, next to the Dairy Queen.
Okay.
They work, three to four days a week, they've got a semi-tran. They're up there for two hours at seven, eight o'clock in the morning. I've gotten them, I think they're doing it now at eight, but still. They're, they're not being a good neighbor. I had to work with their vendors myself to get them to come at different times to pick up their garbage because they were coming at four o'clock, five o'clock in the morning and banging that dumpster on the ground. Um, they have a power washer that comes out to clean their vents above the grills. They come at eleven, twelve o'clock at night and run a little motor at the back of the building, right into the residential neighborhood. I tried to work with the owner, the, of the, the CEO of the franchise restaurant group in Portage. His response to me is, "I'm zoned resi-" or not zoned residential, I'm zoned business, so I do not have to be a good neighbor to you." Yeah, his words. Um, I've, I've resorted now to using the health department to deal with them picking up their trash because their tr- see, I lived in this house before they built that McDonald's thirty years ago. And when they rezoned the land, they sent letters to everybody on the block. Hey, we're going to be, want to build a McDonald's here. We want to get approval to rezone the land. We make a commitment. We're going to walk down the street, pick up the trash that goes out of our parking lot, you know, once a day. Well, they don't do that. Um, they let it build up, and I call the franchisees, say, "Hey, your people aren't picking the trash up?" To nowhere. To the point, I got tired of calling them, and I told them, "Next time I see the trash out there, I call the health department." Guess what? I saw their managers out there photographing their employees picking the trash out of the field after I called the health department. So, this is what kind of businesses we have out in Porter County that don't care about the residential. And my issue with this is currently, it's up to the police officer's discretion when he goes out to deal with a noise complaint. And if I'm a resident having a radio in my backyard, having a party at one o'clock in the morning, they're going to come and tell me I got to turn it off. But when they're over there power washing behind McDonald's, too bad. Live with it. That's not a fair, equitable system that, you know, the Porter County Sheriff's Officer decides if the noise is a problem instead of the county having an ordinance to control it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I actually talked to Mr. Jewell twice, I think, on the phone.
Yes.
I talked to the general manager of McDonald's. Evidently, this has been an ongoing feud for many years. As I explained to you that the reason we don't have a noise, uh, per se is those, in order to, to enforce those, you have to have, you have to go out and buy equipment. That equipment has to be, uh, has to be maintained. Officers have to be trained how to use it. The, the city of Portage, the city of Chesterton, the city of Alvaro can do it. Why can't Porter County?
I've, I've lived, I mean, I've lived in Chesterton, Jim, for, for thirty years, and I've, I've never seen or heard about a noise ordinance in Chesterton.
I can tell you that Portage has a noise ordinance, and they do not have the decibel meter to enforce it. Let me be, but, uh, my point is still, I'm asking the county to do something about it. I've got a bar that's over there across the street that'll have their doors open. They have a live band, and their music reverberates eleven o'clock at night across the highway into the residential neighborhood. How is that fair to us residents if the county isn't going to come up and step up for us when we have problems with businesses in the neighborhood? That's your job as a county, is it not, to, to deal with the businesses that are being bad businesses?
Well, I've been up here for five years, sir, and this is the first time I've ever heard anything like this before. So, for me, I know it's new, so I would-
But I'm going to ask you this, because would you like to have your next door neighbor-
Oh, no, no, no.
-send a truck sit out in front of their house for two hours?
I'm not, yeah, no, no, I'm not-
Three days a week?
Yeah, I'm not, uh-
I mean, that's, that's what I'm talking about.
I'm not condoning any bad behavior. I'm just saying-
And a simple fix would be to have that force them to put up a six-foot cement, I mean, a cinder block wall along the backside of their property. A, it would keep the trash in their parking lot, and B, it would, the cinder block would keep the sound somewhat controlled.
I, going out there and reviewing that, because you had mentioned that on the phone, that cinder block is going to do nothing to, to, to take issue with what you have issue with.
I disagree.
But Jim, you-
A six-foot wall would make a difference.
But-
That's your, this, I'm just bringing you here.
I think they would be more than-
And I'll continue taking this to the state if I have to.
I think they would be more than-
I already reached out to Vic, to, to my Senator, my congressman, and my Senator about this issue.
I think they would be more than happy, uh, from what I got from, on the telephone, to erect a six-foot wall if they thought it would solve the problem.
They're, they, it's mount, it's lip service, like the lip service they gave me when they said, "Well, we called our vendor that comes out and pressure washes and asked them to change the time, and they didn't do it." Then I went out and looked at the name on the side of the truck, and then I went on the internet, found out who the business was, and I called the business. And you know what they told me? "No, we've never heard of this. This is the first we've heard that there was a problem. We'll gladly change the time we serviced that building." I had to work with their trash company, their power washer company, and the guy that drains the, the fluid, the, the oil out of the building. I, I, when it was their, the business, and they gave me lip service telling me that they contacted the businesses asking them to change it. But, yeah, when I did it, they're like, "Oh, we didn't know. We'll gladly change it." Come on, who's pulling who? And you, they're, they're just giving you lip service that they would gladly put up a wall. When the CEO tells me to my face, "I don't have to be a good neighbor."
I, I didn't. Yeah, I, I, I feel, you know, for your situation.
Again, I'm going to come back next month.
I can honestly say, I can honestly say that if I were sitting here with, you know, however many years ago that that was put in.
Again, I'll be back-
Where that was rezoned.
I'll be back next month. I'll, you have this time next month, right? And I'll keep asking until somebody does something about it. And I'm going to go to the, I'm going to start going to my state, to the state, because that's what they're there for. It's what I pay taxes for. If you guys don't want to go and enforce a, a, a noise ordinance, you leave it in the, leave it in the-
No, 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 no. Please, please don't get the, please don't get the opinion that we don't want, you know.
I just asked the sheriff before this meeting about this very problem, and he acted like there wasn't a problem with that in the county. That it, that his, that his office having the opportunity to make a decision on a field, whether this is a noise problem or not, was perfectly fine with him.
Now, we, we will, I will continue to, to speak to the general management of, that manages that particular, uh, McDonald's. But, you know, there, in our positions here, we have, there's a fine line that we have to walk in being fair to you and also being fair to this business. So, I mean-
What about the bar across the street that leaves the door open when they have a live band because it's hot inside, and then the music fires out into the, to the neighborhood?
I believe they're-
Hey, I believe it was told by a Porter County Sheriff that you told the Porter County Sheriff, the, the county attorney, that you were not, that they were not able to enforce any noise ordinances in the, in Porter County because there wasn't an ordinance in the county. And there's a bar on the outskirts of Valpo that were getting regular calls from a Porter County Sheriff about noise from the bar, and they were given a letter from your office telling them never to make a complaint about noise at that bar because there was no noise ordinance, or this was going to be harassment. It was going to be deemed as harassment. I'd love to see the letter. Okay. I'm just telling you what I was told by one of your officers, one of the Porter County Sheriff's told me this. And, and you understand, there's like more than four of them out there, right? Oh, yeah. There's, there's sixty of them. So, all I'm saying is, if there's a letter, I'd love to see it. Well, I'm just telling you what an officer told me. And I'm just telling you what I'm saying. It is. But an officer who's out there answering a noise complaint told me this, and told me, "We're not, we're not required to do anything about businesses that have noise." So, I should tell, if I go out in my backyard, turn my stereo up, you're going to come and tell me, "Yes, but if the business is doing the music across the street really loud, you're not going to do anything." "Yes, that's correct," because we've been instructed by the county attorney not to. That's what I was told by a Porter County Sheriff. Whether it's true or not-
Well, it doesn't matter whether it's true or not, does it?
No, it could be representing the county as a sheriff.
When was that?
Um, last year, when I was complaining about McDonald's and their power washer at eleven o'clock at night. Well, to the best of my knowledge, I've never done such a letter. Okay. And, but I'm telling you, I think representative of Porter County, a sheriff who I'm supposed to trust, told me this when I was complaining about-
You have the officer's name?
It was a year ago. I don't, so I don't remember the officer's name.
I believe that, that business you're talking about, I believe is shut down.
Which one?
The, the one you said had its doors open that were-
No, I'm talking about the one next to-
What's the name of it?
Uh, Sportsman's Inn. It's open, and they, when they have a live band on the weekend, and it gets hot, it's like they open the doors, and the music comes out into the, across the street and into all that residential neighborhood right there. And if we had a noise ordinance, then the officers would have the right to go out and do something about it.
Well, the only thing, the only thing I'm going to say about this, about all this, you are the only one I have received, and I'm not, and I'm not making light in what you're, what you're alleging. You're the only complaint that I've received.
Yeah, but I complained to your office for six months and never got a call back from you. Left voicemails in your voicemail for, for six months and never heard from you. So, whether or not you've knocked out those messages, I don't know, but you're saying this first you've never heard of it.
Jim, I call, I, I talked to you-
You hit the nail on the head.
Wait, wait, timeout, timeout.
My, my secretary told her that I was going to call you.
Timeout, timeout. I've called you twice.
Yes.
I've called the, the, uh, general manager of McDonald's twice. Talked to her twice on the phone, okay? Now, if you were leaving phone messages on my phone that I didn't return for six months, then why all of a sudden did I get, you know, I felt compelled to call you?
Because I called and spoke to the commissioner's secretary and told her I was calling the state of Indiana about this problem if I didn't hear back from you. That's, and then she called you-
And that was supposed to light a fire under me?
And that's that, she sends you an email, and then you called me.
No, no, it had nothing, it had nothing to do with it.
Okay, that's what you told me after you called.
I don't have messages on my phone. I'll take, I'll hand walk you in there right now. There ain't a single one on there. I don't leave messages unanswered on my phone for six months.
Well, I'm telling you that I left two messages over a six-month period, and no one returned them.
Well, I don't know what to tell you. What, you know, it, it's a business. They are allowed to operate within that zoning, okay? I understand that that's, that some part of that is, is annoying to you.
No, it's annoying to-
It is. I am curious. I'm not receiving that any from your neighbors.
There are retired people on that street, and soon to be a four.
Mm-hmm.
And they have to put up with this noise? It's all right. I'll be, I, as soon as I get home today, I'm going to be calling my state people, too, about this. You guys need to-
I don't answer to the state of Indiana.
Well, but-
Okay, this board don't.
That's fine, but they can start trying to put, maybe there's something they can do to put some heat into this issue.
Well, it-
Maybe they can write a state law.
Super if they can. But I think your, your, your commissioner's office is trying to help you if you allow, allow that, you know.
Okay. I'm asking for you to, to, to put in, to, for, put forth a noise ordinance in the state, in the county of Ford. That was my question to the board. Will you please give us a-
Well, I can, I can put that into a motion, but I can tell you right now, you know, I, I don't, I'm, I'm not in the business of creating ordinances that aren't enforceable. That may look good on paper, but it's, it's simply not, it's, it's not logical. There's other air, there's other state laws that the officers can use if, if the noise is truly that bad, like walking into the business and telling them, "Shut the door." They, we don't have to create an ordinance where we've got to go out and-
And if a bunch of the townsters want out an ordinance, it's up to each individual Porter County Sheriff to make his own decision as to what is being-
That's exactly right. This, and, and, you know, well, then it-
You've got sixty officers. You just said this.
Jim, Jim.
You, you now have sixty officers.
Yes.
And sixty people, do you think they all have the same opinion about what is doing noise?
No, but every single, every single law that they, they enforce is up to their individual discretion, as to whether or not it's been broken.
Well, I disagree there, but-
Well, I, I'm sitting here with a master's degree in public safety administration. What's your degree?
I served my country.
Well, okay, good, but it's not law enforcement, Jim. I'm telling you that law, those laws are, it's up to the discretion of the officer whether or not they-
And then I go to the court, and if the officer made a mistake, that, that gets thrown out, and then that officer's in a lot of trouble and a big hassle for the county.
We'll, we'll discuss, we'll, our board will discuss whether, whether or not we, you know, there's any-
And I'll come back next month and ask what you decided.
Okay, fine. And I encourage you to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, who's next? Come forward and give your name and your address, and let us know if-
Can you walk all the way up there?
Yeah.
Okay, you hear me?
It's not about us hearing. It's about the recording, getting you on the-
See that microphone up there? That's what we're trying to get to.
Or this one right in front of you.
Which one?
Or the one, or the one right in front of you, right there. Your name and address.
Or you can take a seat if it's easier.
My name is Diane Bates. I live in Jackson Township. About a year ago, maybe more, I started trying to get yellow lines back in county roads because we're all getting older, and this is a safety issue. Now, I did call the highway department. In fact, actually, I talked to Andy Bozak before, about a year ago, and he talked to the highway guy, and they all were in agreement that this was a good idea. I don't see anything yet. If any of you guys have tried to travel Trattibus Road at night, and it's, it's, it's ugly. So, I want to know where that stands. You guys heard anything about it at all?
Well, we, we, you know, we speak about, you know, uh, painting our, our roads, you know, the, the center line of the sideline. It all, honestly, it all comes down to-
Money.
Yes.
I know. But this is really important.
And those roads that are most, what, most often traveled are those roads who get And those roads that are most, what, most often traveled are those roads who get the, the first. But I, 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 you know, I'm very familiar with Tratibus, extremely dark. I used to own property on the side of Tratibus.
It is, it's extremely dark, right?
Very dark.
And, and I'm on two fifty and that's just, though they, the last time they did it, they made a royal mess out of that. And I'm the first one that calls the highway department and says, man, you guys got an attaboy, that was really great. They didn't do it this time, somebody else did the roads and it was not good, just for your feedback. But the yellow lines are important. And just recently, when I talked to the highway department, said, you know, where does this stand? I haven't heard anything. Well, we did the road, so now we have to wait a year and put something else on them and then we'll put the lines on. Well, that's not helping all these people that are getting older and older driving these roads. I'm really concerned about it, so.
Rich just stepped in, our highway superintendent. Rich, do you have anything to add to this?
Do you want us to double ship and sail with? If we want to strike this year, it would cost about fifteen hundred dollars a mile. We, uh, I don't think it'd be a good choice to go back and strip it. Or go strip it, then come back single sail, back to your next, it's due in the early spring, so just, then strip over again, it would cost three thousand dollars.
Okay.
Three thousand dollars a mile? A mile.
Single ship and sail, we're going to do it next year, it would cost about twenty-five thousand dollars. Or I do a mile or something else for fifteen hundred, for three thousand dollars, if that's viable, just not to strike something like that. And just cover it back up.
Is, is there something temporary we could do, like those yellow things they throw down and pick up again? I, I mean, anything would help, if-
What, temporary old tape now? Also, was this viable because it's probably a passing zone and their approach is going to pass it zone? So if we come out with a temporary staple, they'll not give us a passing zone. We don't want to create any more confusion than we have.
Okay, I, I, I understand what he's saying, but we have a safety issue here and I think it needs to be addressed in some way, somehow. I mean, I'm not going to say you got to have a yellow line there and that's it. If there's another way to do it, great.
Are you, are you talking specifically to Tratibus? Are you talking all of our county roads?
I live on, well, actually, all the county roads, they're not being striped and, A, some are worse than others and I drive some more than others.
We just got done doing a little over thirty miles.
Striping them? Well, I, I guess I'm not in your area.
Well, we have, we have eight hundred and sixteen miles.
Yeah, I know, and it's, it's a big expense, but we can't just quit doing it.
No, and I, I, I agree.
And you know what's worse? What's worse is if you come down ten fifty, Chesterton has annexed down to two hundred. I'm on two fifty. So you leave a beautifully done road with all the white on the sides and the yellow down the middle and you hit a county road where you see nothing.
Well, I could give you some indications in other towns around here where it's the opposite. So I, you know, I hear it from-
Okay, I'm only going by what, where, where I go home.
But we, we're responsible for the whole county. We're responsible for the whole county.
Yeah, I understand that.
And, um, you know, I know in the past up here, up until several years ago, there wasn't a real onus on, uh, striping and other things. And I know as we've come out the last couple of years, we've been more aggressive trying to do it. But when you're behind for fifteen years and you're not doing it and then you decide to go out and do it, it's going to take you a while to get caught up and that's, and we only have limited funds in our budget to do so much. So I, I can, I can see where your frustration is, but I also know that we're in the process of trying to step this up and get this a little bit better. And if you have an interim situation that we need to go back out and take a look at, then I think that's what we have to do and go from there.
Well, number one, I would not, several years ago, have even bothered with that, it wouldn't have bothered me. But now it's becoming scary, you know? And, and yeah, I understand our county problem, I do. And my neighbor right there came with me to reinforce this.
Well, we, we-
Good neighbor. What we will promise you is that, is, is, uh, Mr. Sexton pointed out, you know, once we come in in the spring and then seal that, we'll, I'll get the brightest colored yellow we can find-
Promise?
And we'll make, promise, and we'll, and we'll get it on the side of the roads.
Well, they're waiting at the end.
On the road, yeah. Yeah, right.
I'll let Rich decide.
I'm colorblind. But we promise you, and, and just, please, just please be, we'd go out there today if we, if we could do it.
I know, I know. I started on this over a year ago. I started with Sylvia and Andy and, you know, they said, why don't you come here? I said, okay, uh, you know, it's been going on two years.
Well, I know, I've never gotten a call from Andy Bozak in my life, so I wouldn't know if there is-
He did not talk to you guys, he talked to the highway guy and I can't remember his name.
Well, we're responsible for the highway department and their budget system.
Yeah, and, and I was told basically just what he said, you have to wait a year. Okay, well, I guess I got to go tell you guys at least.
No, I know, I, is there a temporary solution there? And, and we, and he addressed that and, and, uh, we, there, there's really not, so, no, you, you should have showed up here. It's great that you showed up here. Well, trust me, come the spring, it's going to be taken care of, okay?
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Well, you can, I know where you guys are.
She'll find you.
I know where they are.
I like that. Thank you, Diane.